All right. I'm missing a gavel this evening, but good evening. We'll call our meeting to order. This is the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, July 16, 2024. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. And we'll go ahead and get started with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can please stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance, student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Toth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Here.
Commissioner Minin.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Mayor Payne.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First up is our approval of the regular agenda. Do we have any changes that need to be made on our agenda this evening?
No.
All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed as it is published. We don't have any proclamations, recognitions, or certificates of appreciation this evening. So we'll move into public comments for non-agenda items. So this is the public's opportunity to come up and speak about anything that we might not have on our agenda. Each person has five minutes. If you do wish to speak, you can fill out a card in the back. I have a few cards that we'll get started with. And first is Carrie Auerbach. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Auerbach, 7427 Dartmouth Avenue North. Hello. St. Petersburg. Anyway, Treasure Island Adopt a Beach. I want to say that transformative change happens at the intersection of law and engaged community. Well, I think we did it. I think we did it. Having my career in sales, my managers all through my life told me that it's all about the numbers. So if you don't mind, on July 1st, Carol Braddy, Sylvia Rosen, and I hit every hotel and business with these flyers, up and down Gulf Boulevard. Every single one of them got a whole handful of these things. We were pleased to see that most of the hotels already had their own signage saying no fireworks allowed. So that was fabulous. On July 4th, 22 volunteers, 1,000 koozies stuffed with trash bags spread out all over the beach. July 4th, our beach ambassador program were patrolling on their own at beach access points, reminding our visitors that fireworks were not acceptable on the beach. Beach cleanups on July 5th, 44 people, 210 pounds of trash compared to over double the amount from last year. July 6th, 28 people at Caddy's cleanup, 53 pounds. July 7th, 35 people, 73 pounds. July 13th, 26 people, 20 pounds of trash, the least amount of trash we've ever picked up and notated since in the four years I've been doing this. So to thank the fire department, the presence, their presence as always, we had a crew on the beach keeping an eye out on the dunes with the brush truck, our chief and deputy chief on command well into the evening. We had the full police force on duty, patrolling and giving warnings and citations as necessary. Our Public Works Department, above and beyond with a plan of action, including more trash cans, the actual manual remover of removal of full cans, replacing empty cans all day long. Manual labor, bringing the cans up and back. Parks and Recreation, working with our Public Information Officer on signage, passing out flyers, reminding visitors as they park. At the beach entrance, there were signage there as well. From what I hear, Kathy only got sworn at one time this year. That's great. Okay. Human Resources, thank you Jessica for getting a group of city employees joining cleanup on July 5th. To our city manager Gary and our lawyer Jennifer for relentless pursuit of the law. Appreciate that. And especially Public Information Officer Jason Bezel. He got press releases regarding no fireworks on the beach to all local media in the Tampa Bay and surrounding counties, campaigns along city website, all social media, print campaigns, flyers for the hotels, the vehicles at parking lots, engaging other PIOs in surrounding counties to have them share messaging. Media messages to get the word out, including videos with our police chief, Chief Barkley. Local media was out here all the time doing interviews to help get new information out. Parks and Recreation Department had the temporary signs were placed at the beach entryways coming into Treasure Island. Oh, the lit up mobile signs coming into Treasure Island. Then to everyone else behind the scenes that I didn't call out, but I know that your support was wonderful. Our beach ambassador program is 31 strong in wave one. We've got 24 more signed up for wave two. Thank you and congratulations to our mayor and our commissioners. You guys are all official beach ambassadors. I'm proud of you. And again, transformative change happens at the intersection of law and engaged community. Upcoming events, second Saturday beach cleanup, August 10th. And a really cool one coming up in October, Treasure Island Adopt a Beach is taking it to the streets. Beach cleanup, October 12th with Richard Harris. So we're going to be cleaning up some parking lots over by 7-Eleven and Taco Bus. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Carrie. All right. Next is Andrew Vassie.
Is this one, is that mic on?
Sure, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for your time for me to provide the following comments. I've reviewed the Treasure Bay, the bid documents, the bid tab that came in yesterday, the funding sources, and prior cost estimates and grants. The city is considering a significant capital project at Treasure Bay that has what I believe are four significant issues. First, the current plan does not conform with the city's Elevate TI concept. I say concept because it's not adopted yet. And it's using $1.3 million of funding from Pennies for Pinellas for a project that does not meet the resiliency standards that Elevate TI would put forward, and it's going to require more and more funding for ongoing maintenance and repairs if the information that Treasure Island has put out on its website on Elevate TI, given the rate of rise of sea level, comes to bear. The second consideration on this capital project is that it has seen the cost of the golf course component escalate from an initial cost estimate of $553,000 in 2021 to $650,000 in 2022 to $723,000 in 2023 to $1.1 million in 2024. And then yesterday, the bids opened and the lowest apparent bidder, not yet determined to be responsive, but of the two bids that were received, the golf course bid is $1.9 million. So this is a very significant increase over the life of this project as it's been developed by the city for this golf course. That's an escalation of almost 400%. The third issue with this project at Treasure Bay under consideration by the city is that it's been joined with a living shoreline with a walking trail. And I believe this is a pretty incompatible use to put a walking trail around a golf course. The fourth and last issue that I'm identifying is that there's potential procurement issue in bid alternate at number two. There are pre-qualifications requirements in that bid alternate related to a golf course contractor. And the bid package is authored by the city and the contractor who would be the prime contractor on this won't meet the golf course requirement. So we're raising an issue of how that's going to work contractually where the potential subcontractor is put forward but doesn't meet the requirement of the bid document. Going to the Pennies for Pinellas, the city, by its own forecast, this facility can be inundated with floodwater. The project fails any resiliency test. And so to meet the Elevate TI requirements, if it was the intention of the city to do that, will require 11 acre, potentially 11 acres of fill. That's the footprint of the golf course. That's 122,000 cubic yards and will cost about $1.5 to $2 million additionally to meet Elevate TI goal. On the other hand, you could use the Pennies for Pinellas 1.3 for a higher better infrastructure use since it is available for that. The bids that were received yesterday, as I mentioned, are about four times the initial estimate. You're currently 800,000 over your, the bid document estimate of 1.1 and you're 600,000 over your Pennies for Pinellas. So somebody's going to have to identify where that additional funding is coming from because you didn't meet it in the bids that were received. I mentioned the combination of the walking trail around the golf course. There are no walking trails through golf courses anywhere else in the country for a reason. It's not going to be a matter of if, but when somebody's going to get struck by a golf ball, considering the way I play golf, that I wouldn't want to be the one out there myself doing that. Somebody's going to get injured and the city's going to have to deal with it because of that use. I mentioned the pre-qualification of the golf contractor, and I think that because it was listed as a preferred alternate, which is something unusual, and I've done $4 billion worth of airport construction, I've never seen a preferred bid alternate in my career, but that it was preferred and it was apparently intended to be set up as a separate potential procurement, but it doesn't meet that. And so we're going to be watching to see how that gets resolved as the bids are brought forward on August 8th or 9th at the meeting, which is what the current intention is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ray Tuning.
Ray Tuning, 1125 Third Street East, Isle of Palms. Same subject. I was also at the bid opening and I think this is going to be my third time that I've been up here to talk about some of the concerns that I have related to the living shoreline and the golf course. First of all, I want you to know that I'm for the living shoreline. I'm not against the living shoreline. I've been up here before and told you guys that. And I've told you that what I really want to see is it's done. As a civil engineer, professional engineer, I see some inherent concerns that I again want to make sure that you guys are aware of, you understand. We have a couple of new commissioners who've probably never heard what I'm about to say. Understand that there's a certain inherent risk associated with this type of work. When you're doing shoreline type work and you're laying slopes back and you're taking a seawall off, you are going to be entering into an area of which, as you know where it is, in an open bay, when you have a strong storm, you have severe winds blowing and those wave action against those slopes, you have the potential for slope stability problems. You have the problems with scouring and sloughing of the soils. I bring this up because you've got grant money, you're going to build it. That's great. I'm all for it. But we, and when I say we, we the people, the residents of Treasure Island, are going to be stuck with the maintenance of that thing in long term. Is that correct? I think the answer is yes. I know I'm not supposed to ask questions. So understand, and I'll be more than happy to meet with any particular commission one-on-one, and I can show you the cross-sections. So this work actually means you're going to cut the seawall down to elevation one. You're going to replace it with amount of riprap. You're going to lay the slope back. You're going to go to approximate elevation of about six. After that, that's the walking trail, then it's going to dip back down into the golf course area. So understand a couple of things. You can scour that slope, and then when the water gets inside the bowl, I'm going to call it the bowl, you're going to have saltwater all in that. So we're going to potentially spend 1.8, 1.9. You've already spent $150,000 on the engineering and design of this. So that's a lot of money we're spending for something that was probably not going to be resilient. And then we'll have to rebuild that one day. So that's something I want you to consider about. Also, is there any assurance from the engineering and architectural firms that this is going to remain in place and that it's going to stay where it's put and that will have minimal maintenance issues in the future? I don't know, you know, if they're on the hook for any bad design work, but if it is, because I have worked in this particular field by doing litorial shelves for wetlands mitigation stuff, and they're extremely hard to get them to catch to where the vegetation and the roots and all those things take hold to where there's some assurance that it's not going to go away. Again, I am for the living shoreline. I just want to caution everybody, understand what you're getting into, and make sure that you're doing the right thing for the people of Treasure Islands. Get it right. That's all I'm saying. Then, then again, just like Andrew had mentioned, you know, we have an issue because we have certain goals that we're trying to meet for a resiliency, and you're going to ask me as a homeowner that I need to lift my house one day. Okay? I'm going to have to do something, right? Because I have the standard, you know, branch style, single floor, the elevation of my floor is 5.5. So you're going to put this thing up there. And so we're not, I think we're kind of getting the horse, the cart before the horse, and I've mentioned this before. If you can get the Elevate TI to where it's really, I'm not talking about Elevate TI, but get the code written so that fill can be used first before progressing into a situation with the golf course, you're going to be better off. Now, as you know, as you all know, I'm not for the golf course. I think it's a total waste of money on something that's only shared by a few people. Be better if it was broad-based. Inside that bowl that I've said, some of the elevations in there are three and four. There's a concern about water coming through the pipes into the ponds and also raising as those sea levels rise. I noticed that there's a couple of gates that's on the details that you're going to try to close that off. Not all that stuff is going to work the way it should, and I think there's some potential pitfalls. Also, as Andrew had mentioned, I just think, you know, we're going to spend, right now we've got, I guess, 1.3, and now it's going to be 1.387 in Pennies for Pinellas funds that are going to be used for this golf course potentially. That's what's in the budget today.
You can wrap up your comments real quick. Your time's up.
So I think that's a bad use of those monies that should be better spent for infrastructure that we really need here for true resiliency. We have a lift station that hasn't even started yet. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Hoey.
Hey, good evening, folks. Mark Hoey, 225 104th Avenue, number 110. Before I add my comments about Treasure Bay and the plans, I did want to again comment on 4th of July as an audience member. It was fantastic, and I think the volunteers, the police, fire department, and the citizens of Treasure Island really combined forces to really take all of the fear and loathing that we had over personal fireworks out of the equation. It was a great event. Everybody was in a festive mood. Nobody was ducking for cover, including myself. So I want to thank everybody again, and thank you for your efforts on that. I'm not going to belabor the comments the two previous speakers said concerning Treasure Bay and the project. I've watched that since the inception of the concept several years ago and the escalating cost estimates, et cetera, et cetera. But what's come on stream that's caught my attention in reviewing the bid proposal initially and then seeing the responses from the bidders was we had this parallel track with Elevate TI that's been coming down, and it's in its own path and development. And I just found it concerning that that had not been taken into consideration for the Treasure Bay project. Now, maybe it's a matter of sequencing, timing, and it just happens to be that it's coming together like that. But I do think it probably will give some terrible optics if the city pursues approving a project of this scope that's going to be three quarters surrounded by water, and then we don't adopt the Elevate TI premise of raising the seawalls in order to make the property safe. Because I think the same thing, there is not only a resiliency, but the risk to the taxpayers of having that nice new golf course property inundated in a, whether it's six months from now or two years from now. So I just want to ask the commission to maybe ask those questions back is why, why are we doing this in parallel? Should we sequence this a little differently? And if not, why not? Why would we not adopt that in concept and look at these bids again? Because it's going to be a considerable difference in cost. And then finally, take into account what this would mean when you're asking the citizenry to be able to bear the cost over time of raising their properties and seawalls while the city undertakes a public infrastructure project and does not follow those rules or has to come back years from now and spend that money anyway. So just some questions to ask of the team. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Kim Matthew. Okay. Thank you. Margaret Musa Grande.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nice to see all of you. I have a question, I have a few questions, so I will start with this. We'd like to have some specifications as to the city's deadlines for signature petitions for the November election. What is the city's deadline to receive the signatures petition?
So this is a public comment period. You're welcome to provide, you have five minutes to provide your comments. If there's anything that we as a commission feel like needs to be addressed from questions you asked or statements that were made during your comments, we have a time period right following this for our commissioner reports, so we can respond in that time. But this is your time to provide comments.
Okay, that's fine. So if you could please write that down so it could get answered then? It is the deadline for, to receive the signature petitions for the November election. The follow-up question is, what process do you have in place to provide ADA reasonable accommodations request for an extension of time to whatever that deadline is? That is my second question. Okay? And the third question is, how much more time is afforded, can be afforded? The other issue that I would like to bring up is I would like to submit a formal request to have this committee authorize a charter amendment review committee made up of resident volunteers of the city. And I would like to bring that to the floor. And those are my comments. It is time that this body gather information from the residents and the people that it represents and takes a temperature of what is needed in the city. Democracy is not static. It is a dynamic process. And as a dynamic process, it is incredibly important that this body continues to reach out to the community and get a sense of what are the concerns and the issues that they are facing. What we see here in people come is just the tip of the iceberg. And I think we all know that in this room. It is only when they feel cornered do they come. And I know that because I'm an attorney and I hear them, because they come to us before they come to you. But the truth is that it is your responsibility as elected officials in a democracy to reach out to the people that you represent in order to do your job properly. And for that reason, it is time to authorize and a charter amendment review committee and to gather the constituents of the city of Treasure Island and find out what issues trouble them. What is working and what is not working? And that is the reason that I am here today. I would very much appreciate also straight answers about the deadlines that I requested. Okay? We want to know. And I know that the city attorney knows that there is also an email out to her. So I would, whatever is said here, I would also like the courtesy of getting those answers in writing for my own records. And I very much appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Mary. I want to hear, I live at 240 108th Avenue. I've come today with a question about, I think they're called electric bikes, the bikes with motors on them. Okay. It seems like it's a little bit unregulated on where and what they can go, where they can go and where they can be ridden. They come on the sidewalk, they come on the street, they come on the bike lane. I have a dog that I walk late at night. I almost got run over by one the other night. And I wonder if there's something we can do to make it a little bit safer for pedestrians with these bikes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. We'll move on to our commissioner reports then. We'll start with Commissioner Toth.
All righty. Thank you. Good evening, and I'm glad you all came out to see it, to participate. I just want to first off thank Carrie and the city staff for ensuring our safety on the 4th of July. I was out passing koozies and garbage bags and some extra garbage bags. It was great. People were very receptive to taking them. And obviously, the results show. And it was really nice to be safe out on the beach and not feel like we were hit by other people's missiles, fireworks, stray things. Anyway, that was good. And then also, I want to remind everyone, the Isle of Capri, keep an eye open for it. August 2nd is the oyster garden event where we will be doing oyster stringing and Roselli Park. And oysters are fundamental to water clarity, so the thought is to put oyster gardens underneath your docks to help with water filtration. And that's basically my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dr.
I think to both our chiefs, you're going to hear a lot of thanks and congratulations. You guys did a perfect job. You know, it's nice to hear people that were out on the beach talking about, you know, that they didn't have to shield their children from fireworks, firecrackers, you know, bottle rockets, whatever it was. So thank you very much for that. I also want to thank the Public Works Department. You know, we've had a lot with Adopt a Beach, and I heard more comments this year than I ever have about how clean things were, about how open things looked and how bright things looked. People are talking about the lights that we have on the causeway. So I want to thank those folks because I know that they've really worked hard. And in this weather, the public works for guys, I don't know how they do it. Every time, every once in a while, I take a walk down the beach or something, and I did on Saturday for the cleanup, and after about an hour and a half, I was ready to go home. So I appreciate everybody really doing and paying attention to our city and the compliments that we were paid. So thank you very much. The only other thing I have is that I will address the e-bike situation. The e-bike, we do have an ordinance. The e-bike, we do have an ordinance. The ordinance basically says that the bicycles that have motors on them or any type of micromobility should be on the, on the street, especially on Gulf Boulevard. The enforcement of it is another thing, and the chief could tell you that. It's very difficult to do. And, you know, I almost got hit by a bicycle and I was on the beach trail on July 4th. And the one thing I think that, I don't believe that we put out any type of notice saying they can't be on the beach trail. And I wish I would have thought about that because we did see a lot of electric bikes and other micromobility items that were going up and down on July 4th, and we were packed. We, you know, so they're weaving in and out and, but we do have the ability to, the city manager does, to actually say that they are not allowed on the beach for special events. So, but yes, we do have an ordinance there, but it's all about the enforcement. So thank you for bringing that item up.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Minning.
Well, it's been said, and I'll just say ditto on the thanks to everybody involved on the Fourth of July and subsequent cleanup events. Excuse me, it's really nice to see the city come together on that issue. Hopefully, we can continue that compatibility and, excuse me, move forward on other projects that come in front of us. But it really was, I mean, Commissioner Toth and Commissioner Toth said it well, as well as the other folks in the room, but that was really a victory when you think of what social media did. Reminded me of the days at Caddy's when social media came out and said, no more beer. But it really spread fast and it was very effective. So many, many thanks to all those parties concerned. I have two additional items, just updates. We had talked about planning some elevated vegetation along the median on the causeway to go with the, I'll call it the low hanging or the low elevation material that's already there. That will be done once this drought, and maybe we're getting over it, is done, is running the cycle. And the same thing for the vegetation along Paradise Boulevard. That will be done once we feel that that vegetation can sustain itself or it can sustain itself with some, excuse me, some irrigation. So that's my report here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickey.
Part of the problem with being commissioner from District 4 is you come up last on congratulating and thanking everybody for the work they did on July 4th. I can't really add much to what has been said, other than I think everybody universally agreed that the results exceeded expectations in every way possible. So I sat there on the beach and watched the fireworks from in front of Sunset Chateau on Sunset Beach on July 4th, and I kept looking both ways for illegal fireworks going on. And the worst thing I saw pretty much was the little sparklers, and there were kids that were doing it, and I didn't have the heart to get after them about that. So other than that, perfect execution, very difficult task to take on, and the city took it on and had it, you know, everything went just perfectly on that. So thank you again for everybody that was involved in that. And I know it was a citywide and citizen-wide effort. So congratulations to everybody for getting those results. The other thing I wanted to add was we're shooting right now for June 29th, Monday, June 29th, which is two weeks from yesterday, to implement the pay-by-play parking. We still have some tasks to complete before that's executed. We've got to relocate some of the signage. But the communication, both the press release and some communications to the citizens, to the residents of Sunset Beach about this pay-by-play parking for, on the side streets will be forthcoming in the next few days.
Great, thank you. For my report, I'll address Ms. Musa-Granda's questions, and I might need some assistance from staff. So the first question was, what is the deadline for petitions for the November ballot?
All right, so there is a deadline for the petitions, which, hold on a second. And that, first of all, the deadline for the ballot language is set by the supervisor of elections. And that deadline, I believe, is August 9th. I don't have it directly in front of me. So in order for the commission to consider any petition that would identify ballot language as to whether or not it's legally sufficient to be on the ballot, the latest you could consider that would be at your August 6 meeting. That's your last regular meeting. And so those petitions would then be due a week ahead of that in order to be on the agenda, which I want to say is July 30th. Again, I don't have that right in front of me, so it might be the 31st.
Okay. And do we have, are there any procedures in place for an ADA accommodation for that deadline? Again, as you just answered, this is a deadline that's set by the supervisor of elections office, not the City of Treasure Island, so I'm not sure that you'd be able to answer that, but if you're familiar with it.
Right, so I, just so you know, I did get an email from Ms. Musa, and I did respond to that and advise that if they needed an accommodation with regard to the supervisor of elections deadline, that was something they were going to need to take up with the supervisor of elections because we don't have the authority to alter those deadlines in any way. With regard to the city's deadlines, first of all, they need to be, we do have an ADA coordinator. There would normally be a formal request for an accommodation that would need to be considered. And again, that request should meet all of the legally sufficient requirements. And, but if the supervisor of elections deadline doesn't move from the 9th, you're meeting on the 6th, there's really no other public meeting. It's not as if we have this where you have to do it three months ahead of the deadline. You're right up next to it. So I don't know how much room there really is for an accommodation just based on the supervisor's deadline.
Okay. And how much more time can be afforded? I think, I don't think that's something that we can.
Right, that's kind of what I just responded to as best I could.
Okay.
Given information.
Thank you. As to the formal request to authorize a charter review committee, we did have a charter review committee that was convened in 2022 and presented their findings to the commission. That is something that is required in our charter every five years. So every five years, the commission has to at least consider whether we want to appoint a charter review commission, and we did that in 2022. I had the privilege to serve on the charter review committee, the previous one to that in 2016, which at the time Mayor Bob Minning appointed me to that committee, and that was the first thing I got involved with, with the city, and it was a really great experience. So we do follow the guidelines on that, and we could consider that every five years. And it's a process that's well-established within the city and has been underway for a very long time. Any, those meetings, I can vouch for it myself. When I was on it, we made a really strong effort to get out into the community. We made yard signs that were placed out to advertise the dates of our meetings for encouraging residents to bring their suggestions and ideas on what we need to do within the charter. And we had some good suggestions that came from our 2016 commission, and we also had some good ones come from our 2022 commission. So we have not, at this point, there are still some recommendations that came from the last charter review committee that haven't been placed on a ballot yet, but there, as far as I'm aware, there's not really a timeline on, we'll take, we take the recommendations from the charter review committee, then the commission, the city commission will decide what ballot that would go on if we put it on a ballot at all. The recommendations from the charter review commission are simply that, they're suggestions. So the commission has to take action and do an implementing, I believe it's an implementing ordinance, I just was reading.
It is.
Yeah, an initiating ordinance has to be done for each item that would go on the ballot. So we have to comply with those timeframes that are set by the supervisor of election when something goes through the charter review committee, just as a resident needs to comply with those deadlines if they're initiating a charter amendment through our petition process, which is also outlined in our, in our charter. So hopefully, that answers your questions. We're always open to those, and if anyone has suggestions for the charter, I'd encourage you to wait for our next charter review commission and bring them to their attention. Or you can utilize the initiation by petition process. And I did not have anything else to report on, so that, oh, I did want to mention, just to kind of save the date and make sure that it's on everyone's calendar for Tuesday, July 30th at 2:00 PM, we will be having our Elevate TI commission presentation. So that'll be here. The commission up until now hasn't really, hasn't gotten involved in the Elevate TI process. We're, of course, we're available to sit in on any of the briefings and meetings that Planning and Zoning Board has had, but up until now, it's been within that body, and now it's coming before us. So if anyone hasn't attended an Elevate TI meeting yet, I encourage you to come to that one, learn what it's all about, and hear what our conversations are amongst the city commission. And with that, I'll, we'll move on to our next item, which is city attorney and city manager reports.
Mayor, may I ask a question regarding, regarding the request for an extension on the deadlines? And that was if the resident who wants to make, to make these deadline extensions or is asking for that, if they can't meet the current deadlines, August 6th, August 9th, July 30th, if they can't meet that, the next election would be in March?
March.
Okay, that they could target. Okay, thank you.
And the associated deadline is December.
Oh, December.
It goes from August to December.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then it would back up from there. So I'm not sure what that December deadline is for the ballot language, but then you would back up to whatever the meeting is for the commission and then the agenda deadline.
Thank you.
That deadline is December 31st.
November 31st?
December.
December.
Thank you. Your reports.
I have no report this evening.
Okay.
The only topic that I have to address has already been addressed by some of our residents already. We did, in fact, have the bid opening yesterday. The bid consisted of a couple of different parts. One of them was the living shoreline, the trail, the berm, and then a separate piece of that, but all in the same bid package, was the golf course. We got two, what we believe is qualified bids. We are still in the process of evaluating those bids. They were just opened yesterday, and it's a fairly extensive bid packet, so we will keep you apprised. They came in approximately a million dollars over what we had anticipated. We know that's a problem, and at this particular point, we need to digest it a little bit more before we can come back and be prepared to talk about options. We intend to bring the bids back to have that conversation, hopefully, in a work session on August 6th, if not a work session on August 20th, in order to keep these fresh and continuing to move forward. But it takes a, particularly in light of whatever else, whatever, with everything else that is going on.
Yeah.
Particularly the budget and Elevate TI, it's going to take us a couple of weeks to get these bids appropriately evaluated.
Okay. And I assume we will advertise that to the public and make them aware of what the date it is that we'll have that on the workshop? And it'll be on the, yeah, published agenda? Okay. I did have a question. I know we were, there was discussion about the date of the budget workshop. Have we landed on, is that, are we moving that?
We did. It's August 2nd, again, commencing at 10:00 in the morning.
Okay, I just wanted to, I hadn't received a calendar invite.
I'd gotten the responses from, from all five, albeit hesitantly, but we got them, and so we're, we're ready to go.
I do appreciate that. That was a request from me. I apologize, everyone. I had a little bit of a calendar mix-up, so I appreciate everyone's flexibility and just wanted to make sure that we're being transparent with the public, that that budget meeting is being moved from August 9th up one week to August 2nd at 10:00 AM. Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right, moving into approval of minutes. We have the approval of minutes for the commission regular meeting and workshop minutes for March 5th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the commission regular meeting and workshop as written.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any public comment? Hear none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Commissioner Minning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. We have one item on consent, which is the modification for Pinellas County-wide Law Enforcement Memorandum of Understanding. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve and authorize the execution of the modification for county-wide law enforcement memo of understanding, MOU, as written.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Any public comment? Hear none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Commissioner Minning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is items of business. Our first one is the first reading of ordinance 2024-03, and we'll start with a reading of the ordinance title, please.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-03, an ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending section 3-4, proximity of establishments to school or, to church or school exception by removing the 50-room requirement for hotels from the exception. Amending section 68-302, uses permitted to correct a codification error. Amending section 68-484, accessory uses in motels or hotels. To retitle the section, removing the 50-room requirement from incidental services, amending the 10% floor area requirement, clarifying alcoholic beverage establishments and distinguishing between accessory use and incidental services in hotels and motels, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
All right.
Staff report.
So you guys previously reviewed this one back in March. The commission requested that we went, go back and look at the 10% floor area requirement. If you recall, the ordinance itself does not allow for accessory uses for hotels of 50 or less rooms. So that was the intent of the original ordinance. We went back, we removed the 50-room requirement based on the fact that it was kind of based on old liquor laws, kind of outdated laws, regulated by the Department of Alcohol and Tobacco. So that was removed. We went back and looked at the 10% requirement, we removed that requirement because the uses themselves are supposed to be supplementary to the primary use. The only exception to that was we left the 10% requirement for a standalone alcoholic beverage establishment, so just a bar would still be restricted to the 10%. We fixed a codification error that we found, and in this go-around, we also made a clarification between accessory uses and incidental services, because they were just kind of jumbled in there, just clarifying that accessory uses are more restaurants type of things than the incidental services that are permitted by right are just like snack shacks and, you know, where they sell pool supplies and things like that. So we've made those changes in there as well.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-03 and schedule its second and final public hearing on July 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments? Thank you for your work putting this together, we appreciate it. And I know that this should hopefully spur some good ideas up and down our beach for future development.
A lot of people have already asked about it, so.
Great.
Good.
All right, do we have any public comment? Hear none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Commissioner Minning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. Item two is Adopt Resolution 2024-05, proposed property tax millage rate for fiscal year 2025.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I've had a few items in a row for your consideration tonight, so I hope everyone's had their caffeine. The initial item for you is the first official act in the adoption of the FY25 budget, which is setting the millage rate for the upcoming budget. By July 30th of every year, all taxing authorities must have their Uh, by July 30th of every year, all taxing authorities must have their, uh, intended millage rate, um, accepted so it can be included in the annual trim notices that are mailed out in mid-August to all taxpayers. Uh, these letters are intended to arrive in the two to four weeks before each of the taxing authorities have their first budget, uh, hearing so that, uh, they can, um, see what the, uh, see what their local elected, uh, boards are, uh, considering for the upcoming year. Uh, the millage rate for FY25 is proposed to remain the exact same at 3.8129 mils, which includes the .5 mils for the long-term capital needs of the Causeway Bridge. The final taxable valuation for Treasure Island as of, uh, this tax year is $3,157,902,373, uh, which is an increase of about 11.57% over the previous valuation. The, uh, rollback rate, meaning the rate at which the city would need to levy to collect the exact same property tax revenue as this year, is 3.4649. The FY25, uh, proposed budget and subsequent five-year financial plan, which were published and made available online last week, is predicated on the adoption of the proposed flat rate of 3.8129 for the FY25 through '29, uh, five-year view. For FY25, maintaining the same ad valorem rate will generate an additional $619,900 in budgeted revenues for FY24. Uh, for another year, uh, for, uh, yes, for another year to adopt the exact same tax rate for FY25 will require the four-fifths majority of the Commission based on the property tax statutes. Basically, as the math works out, if a valuation increases by more than 10%, it triggers that 10% change and requires a four-fifths majority. Or it's two-thirds, but two-thirds of five of you is four. We have to round up in the math world. Oh, yeah, so we require the four-fifths and those meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, September 3rd. Happy early birthday, Kelly. And, uh, Tuesday, September 17th, both at 6:00 PM. Uh, and as the, uh, Mayor mentioned, the much more interesting budget workshop will be 10:00 AM on August 2nd. Um, with that, I will turn it over to the Commission and answer any questions you, uh, might have.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any questions?
The only question I have, when I saw this on the agenda, uh, I was curious, and this is going to be my first budget review process, so, uh, forgive me if my, if my question is a result, because I haven't been through the process, uh, yet, but it seems to me that we would be approving, uh, the, the millage rate after we've reviewed the budget and not, and not before. So, and I know we're on a deadline right now, so I know it's too late to affect it for this year, but I was going to ask if we could consider, uh, future years having the budget review process moved up a little bit. No, it's not possible.
So actually, by statute, you are required to adopt a proposed millage rate and, um, like, which is what you're doing today as in a not-to-exceed amount. That gets published so that everyone is aware of it. You're not actually adopting the millage rate today. Then you'll have your budget hearings and you'll have your hearings on the millage rate, and at that time, you will adopt the budget and the millage rate.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That makes, uh, perfect sense.
The, the reason being is that at this meeting, whatever rate the Commission sets, you cannot go over that rate between now and the adoption of the budget. If you, I think you can, but the, the only way that you can is that you have to send certified mail to every single property owner in the city notifying that you intended to actually increase the rate from what you had adopted at this meeting. That's a lot of mail that, uh, I, my staff doesn't want to have to deal with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for me?
But the millage rate could be decreased?
Yes, the milli, the, the rate can come down. So that's typically, um, um, most cities and most places I've worked, uh, almost always will keep their exact same rate unless they had a plan of increasing from a prior year, um, and, and with the notice that they can always reduce it between, uh, setting the, setting the, the proposed rate and adopting the actual rate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Not your first rodeo down here.
No, not at all.
All right.
Actually enjoy the budget, though.
I am so happy to hear that.
Well, I, I do, because it gives us, our residents, an opportunity to see what we're doing, what each department does, and it really clarifies all the upcoming projects. It's a good thing. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-05, setting the proposed millage rate at 3.8129 mils for fiscal year '25 and holding the first public hearing on, of the budget on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM at City Hall.
Second.
Okay. Any Commission discussion, comments?
How many years have we kept it at that level?
With the exception of the bridge increase.
Yeah.
Which was .5 over, actually it was four or five years.
Point two.
Uh, it's, this has been the rate for, uh, what, a decade now, Mike?
At least. I'd have to go back and, and the, the actual-
This is a decade, if not longer.
The historical millage rate is actually one of the pages in the, uh, adopted budget book for this year, so that would be the quit, that's where I would go and look. Um, but that's, um, I, I think a decade sounds about right, but I can get you, uh, that, uh, that information.
Yeah, that sounds about.
I just wanted to get that out in the, in the public.
Question.
All right. Um, any other Commission discussion? Sorry. All right. Now for public comment, I do have a card from Mark Hoey.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, thank you, Commissioner Dickey. You asked the question I had, and again, being, being less than informed. I'd started looking at this budget and the same thing came up, Mike, saying, wait a minute, we're approving a millage rate and we're just now getting into the meat of going through that budget. So thanks for that clarification, but it brings up another question, is in putting together that budget, that 600,000 plus that is the increase, where is that in the budget document at this point? Where did it get allocated or is it pigeonholed somewhere within the budget docs since it is the provisional amount that we will have in the way of revenue? So that's the, the one question, you know, and, and thank you, Commissioner Minin, you're right. It's been held in place as a percentage for a decade, but when you have 11% increase in property tax values, uh, let's hope we, I wish I could all live on a 10, 10, 11% a year increase that's just coming like this. Hopefully, we'll continue to, uh, keep that in mind in the budget. That's not going to happen every year going forward. In fact, we may be seeing a, a peak on that as this year progresses, so let's not get too excited about spending that extra money. But if I, somebody could get back and just let me know about where that would appear in the budget as a placeholder, uh, unless you choose to change it at the time of the workshops. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, and that'll conclude public comment. Um, to answer the question, I, I mean, I can answer it for you, I think.
I'll, I'll let you.
Yeah.
I'll correct if there's any.
That is factored into the staff's projections and it's, it's not in one specific area. It's spread across the whole budget. That's just an, the increase, um, of what we have to work with for, for the budget. So does that kind of cover it?
That's, it's the, it's the ad valorem, uh, revenue line that's actually in the line item detail. It's a, um, a revenue that's available to use for any general funded operations.
That's where the, the revenue is, but as far as expenditures, that's not necessarily-
Correct. There's no earmarking of any sort of year-to-year tax increases. Uh, it would be, that would be a lot of paperwork.
Any further comments?
Yeah, can you not compare a department, let's say, rec, um, their last year's budget and then this year's budget?
Oh, I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's part of, uh, the analysis throughout the document.
That's what I mean.
Oh, and trying to see how much of that 600,000 got applied to each, I mean, it, that's a, that's a math problem. It's a, an easy one to do.
But it's available.
Yeah, it's, it's not available. It's, I'd have to work on it, but I could do it.
Well, so could the citizens.
Well, it's in the budget. The budget shows, each department shows their percentage increase.
It's available if you're willing to do your own ciphering.
Yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, item J3 is Second Amendment to the Agreement with PSTA for Trolley and Paratransit Services.
Okay. Uh, next item is to accept the five-year extension for the agreement with PSTA for Beach Trolley and Paratransit Services. Um, five years ago, the city and PSTA came to terms for a renewed, um, agreement spanning 10 years with the provision that the parties would meet up at, uh, during year five to true up the cost for the second five years. It's kind of similar to what we do with a lot of our vendors is we, you know, don't make them hold rates in for so long, because they'll probably give us higher rates than what they, than what the actual rates would be. So this was like a nice compromise so that we would negotiate it midpoint, um, during the 10-year term. The city contracts with PSTA to provide the interconnected trolley services along the beach and for paratransit, uh, transportation. Uh, the renewal for the trolley services is roughly similar to the prior rates, uh, with the true-up adjustment of about 10% in the first year, uh, followed by 7% increases annually thereafter. The current rates that we're paying in this current five-year period had a 13% increase in the first year, then 7%. So it's, um, a little bit, uh, less than the previous five-year, but is, um, fairly similar. Based on the billable hours from PSTA, I, uh, ridership has increased about 3% compared to this time five years ago. Uh, and if you factor in what we can assume is some suppressed ridership during the pandemic, the increase could have been higher. Uh, the paratransit services, however, have had a much larger percentage increase based on some fundamental changes on how PSTA, uh, provides that service. Uh, for starters, utilization of the paratransit services system-wide has increased 50% compared to five years ago, just putting a strain on, you know, the PSTA system county-wide. Additionally, five years ago, the vendor that was under contract seems to have, um, severely underbid their services to the point where the company actually had to declare bankruptcy and went out of business. So they had to go out and get a new contract, which reflects, you know, much more closer to what we would call market rates at this point. That increase trickled through, um, and is, is affecting the rates that PSTA is paying and is, since it's just a contractual pass-through, their costs are going up, they've, uh, requested that, um, our rates that we pay to them goes up, um, some, somewhat, uh, in line with their increase. Uh, the rate for the increase, uh, just for the paratransit services is 12,500, um, which is, represents a 227% increase, which, if you look at the percentage, it's a scary number, but it's 12,000, um, which, out of a city budget of 46 million, is not, uh, percentage-wise overall, um, that, uh, that much of a, a budget impact. It's going from, uh, the 5,500 to 18,000. Uh, since it's also a, quite an increase to absorb, uh, PSTA has agreed to hold that new rate of 18,000 constant for the next five years. Um, this means that the city's cost to PSTA for FY25 will be budgeted at $334 and six, or 334,610. Um, and if the city were a full PSTA member and didn't have the power to negotiate these specific routes, our ad valorem tax burden would be about 2.1 million. Uh, the, uh, cost, the 334,000 is already included in the FY25 budget, which is balanced and provided, uh, for public, uh, consumption. And, uh, with that, I will turn it over to the Commission to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions?
How much do, uh, our residents use the para facility?
The paratransit one, uh, they, PSTA provided some data, but there's a, a little bit of, uh, a HIPAA sort of, uh, with some of the data, but they did indicate that, uh, in particular, there were two or three residents that had contributed to about almost half of the rides over the past year. So we know that there are, uh, a handful of residents that are using it frequently, um, and they're, you know, the other, the other residents that are using it are much more infrequently. So, uh, without asking PSTA to divulge information that they probably can't share, um, you know, they could kind of just share that high line, but it, it is, I, I know they had informed me that, um, our use of the paratransit, not just with these, a couple of individuals, but overall has been increasing, just like the system's, uh, usage has been increasing.
Is it a good value for us, do you think?
That's, uh, that's a policy question that is, uh, that's, I'm going to push back on you. I, I do the numbers and I make it work. As far as, as far as, uh, whether or not the, to continue the service is, uh, my one of policy that, uh, while I can opine on it, I would, I would defer to the Commission.
It wasn't meant that way. I was just saying that, that if, if our residents need it and use it, um, then I would consider it a good value, but.
If, if we, if, if we didn't have any residents using it, I would say that this, that why would we be doing this at all? Like, you know, the 5,000, uh-
Commissioner, honestly, for, for the people who do use it, they need it.
Yeah, understand.
It's not, it's, this isn't, this isn't, instead of taking a cab.
No.
It really is, uh, and it's, it's a very valuable service to the people who end up having it.
You, you can't call a, an Uber if you're wheelchair-bound, for example.
No.
For less than a thousand dollars a month for the citizens that use it, it is of good value, across for the city itself.
What's less than a thousand a month? What?
No, it's about 12,000.
No, it's 12,000, the increase. It's 18,000 a year, so, so 1,500 a month or four, whatever.
Sorry.
Okay.
So the only thing I asked is that we actually put a little bit more information about the paratransit on to our website for people that really don't know about it, so they also can access the service.
I actually, uh, been going through this whole process with PSTA. They have been super nice and, and reaching out to me, so I'm sure that they have, they have some information they'd be happy to share and Jason would, can get it up on the website and, in no time.
Thank you.
Putting work on you, Jason.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the City Manager to execute a Second Amendment to the Contract Extending the Agreement with PSTA for another five-year term.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Further comments? All right, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Next is item J4, Service Agreement for the Gulf Beaches Public Library, Fiscal Year 2025.
All right, third item for me tonight is to, uh, get the Commission's acceptance of the FY25 Funding Request and Services Agreement for, uh, from the Gulf Beaches Library. Um, I, I would imagine that Commissioner Toth probably has a better breakdown of the library's goals for FY25, um, but I can tell you the total request is 6.3% higher than FY24, which with some mod, like, uh, slight adjustments to, basically the sort of, sort of adjustments the city makes, just costs have gone up, uh, for, uh, different services, salaries, benefits, that it's, it's normal, uh, normal cost of doing business, so the 6.3 doesn't really raise, uh, any eyebrows, um, from the finance side. Um, with that, or like the, or like the previous items, this too has already been included in the FY25 Proposed Budget. Uh, and with that, unless Commissioner Toth once has a, a bunch of, uh, interesting stuff about the library, I will turn it back over to the Commission.
I do. I do. I provided you the usage rates comparative to last year and this year. And I'll ask that our city manager also publish it, so you get an idea of the door count and door count by age. Also, would like to point out that the 6.3% is $10,000 for our city. We've really tried to keep our budget as tight as possible with increasing services, and we're seeing a higher usage of services. Kathy has just recently had the kids for kids camp, and the camp is, the librarian has come down and worked with the children at kids camp. So we're doing a lot more outreach with the community, games, new computer program for learning for the kids. So it's pretty much, we've tried to keep it all in check.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike or Commissioner Toth?
Nope, interested.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the 2024-2025 Gulf Beaches Library Service Agreement in the amount of $166,623 and authorize the city manager to include the costs in the FY '25 budget.
Second.
All right, any further comments or discussion? Thank you for your hard work and dedication on the library board and for representing us there.
Thank you. And by the way, I do sit as treasurer on the library board, so I really keep a close, tight eye on the, the funds and where it's coming and going.
Great, good. Is everything going a little bit better on the board since we last talked, or?
It is, thank you. Yeah, and it seems like we're, you know, gelling better.
Good.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
See, I just, I just knew I could just defer to Commissioner Toth and let her do all the library talking.
Yeah.
All righty, do we have any public comment?
Can I add something to? I'd like to encourage you to get your library card because not only can you read the newspapers, but you also get, can get a museum pass for a family of four from, with using your library card. So there's a lot of benefits to the library card, and it's also a free service. So it's not really free. We pay for it in our taxes, but nonetheless, it's, you reap way more than what's out there for you for families and watching your budgets. You can take them to the movies, museums, and we do have movies and children's events that come on. Please look at the website.
For the newspapers, is that an online access?
Yeah, with your library card.
So Tampa Bay Times and?
Yes, and The Post, and a few other ones. I think The Wall Street Journal.
Cool, that's great.
And also research magazines, too.
I learned something new.
Those are online.
All righty, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. All right, item J five is purchase a replacement parking enforcement vehicle.
All right, my last item for the commission's consideration this evening is to purchase a replacement parking enforcement vehicle. And I think I saw Chief, yeah, I thought Chief was here earlier. So if there are any PD-specific questions, I might have to defer to them, but I, I think I've got a pretty good understanding of their needs and what I, what experience I have working with our parking program. As I have some information about these, this process as well. A few years ago, when the commission approved the upgrade of the second parking enforcement position to full-time, staff kind of got created and shuffled around some existing fleet cars to have two functioning parking enforcement vehicles, rather than kind of hot-seating one and having, you know, just doing shifts so that they, we can actually have two enforcement officers on the weekends patrolling all up and down the beach. The current vehicles that they're using are seven and eight years old, with vehicle 718 in particular having many recent mechanical issues. I think even today Detective McDonald told me that it's like this close to needing a new AC. So I mean, that's, we're duct-taped and baling wire that vehicle. Just to highlight the impact of having two fully functioning enforcement vehicles, our two parking enforcement officers collected three months of parking fines in just one month period. So the budget for, for three months, they were able to collect in one month. We don't do that unless we've got that full enforcement out there on the weekends and during our peak times. So that's a, that's a direct downtime of any of those vehicles has a direct fiscal impact on the city. Rather than replacing with a new Ford Escape, I suggested and PD accepted the idea to purchase a hybrid Toyota RAV4 with all-wheel drive. The all-wheel drive part in particular is of some importance to PD because it would allow that vehicle to be driven on the beach and would also allow, and I'm not going to steal Chief's thunder, but would allow for our parking enforcement to actually do code enforcement as well, including dogs on the beach. So it would just be, allow us to have another tool in our arsenal so that our parking enforcement officers can also, you know, be used to supplant our police and be able to help patrol for that particular issue. While this particular make and model is available under the state contract, we've been told that they're no longer accepting orders for this year. So that means probably about six months before we'd be able to place an order for the next vehicle. Since we had, we kind of pulled a page out of the fire department playbook back in December, we ran into a similar situation and just contacted a local dealership to see what their best price was. And they were within, I can't remember the cost, but it was within a close enough amount that it was worth spending a little bit extra to have the vehicle like the next day. So much like that is, we reached out to a couple of Toyota dealerships in the area, and were able to get a quote that, back today, that is probably going to be about 1,500 more than what the state price list is. So, you know, kind of brass tacks at the end of it. It's, is the commission willing to spend a little bit extra money over the state price list to have a vehicle? Almost certainly tomorrow, if not by Thursday, it's on their lot right now, that we could basically have this vehicle in service in a couple of weeks, once it's outfitted with all of the, because we have the LPR in technology that we have to move over from the old Escape to the new one. So that might take a week or two. But it means that we could probably have this in service in a month versus waiting six, seven months for the other one just to come in. And that assumes that the next year's prices are the same as what they are right now. If next year's prices are $1,500 more than what they are right now, then we've just wasted six months and will pay the exact same that we would right now. So staff kind of looked at this one and thinks that this is probably the best option right now. We can wait and, and do it in a, in next fiscal year, basically carry the money forward. But at that point, we'd be, we have that other vehicle is about seven years old, too, and is in the five-year plan to get replaced in a couple of years. So if we get them, I'm trying to get them so they're spaced enough apart so that we're replacing them about every five years, each one every five years, rather than replacing them both at the same time every 10 years. Just kind of smooths out the, the costs and allows for, you know, different technology, different vehicles to come out of. All of a sudden, in a couple of years, there's a new electric vehicle that's just fantastic for exactly what we need, but it's not available right now. It gives us the opportunity to buy a different vehicle as it comes up. Again, with the, I put a little math in the agenda item itself, kind of breaking down the fuel savings. I think at $1,500, the fuel savings alone in the first year pays for itself. Just the miles per gallon difference between the current Escape and this hybrid RAV4. So staff thinks that this is a worthwhile item, is, and is in keeping with a lot of the strategic sustainability goals of the city, and it also helps the, the bottom line. And like I said, the, the enforcement that's out there is Emily and Dave are doing a fantastic job making sure that our parking network is buttoned up tight and people are paying the rates. And if they aren't, they're getting caught. So with that, if the commission has any questions, if it's any PD-related, I'd probably have to defer to them. But if it's anything about the purchase of the vehicle itself, I will happily answer any questions as I can.
Well, your presentation begs the question, what would happen if we had a third? No, I'm being 100% serious. What would happen if we had a third? We know that we're not getting all the hours, but if we were able to collect in one month what we normally collected in three?
I, I think at this point, we'll probably be reaching diminishing returns to add a third. Two, right now, if I remember correctly, they actually overlap on the weekends so that Dave and Emily both tend to work on the weekends, and then they'll take different days off during the week, just, just for overlap. I mean, the weekends are the busiest days. That's half of our parking revenue comes in on Saturdays and Sundays. So it makes plenty of sense for them to be out there. With the new LPR technology that's on these vehicles, I think that we'll reach a level of efficiency that, rather than taking about an hour to do a manual check down the beach, it will probably cut in half, you know, in theory, once, once the, that technology is turned on citywide. So I think with two vehicles and the LPR, it makes the third one moot.
So, you know, we say that we enforce seven by 24, but we don't. Not even close.
Well, now, now with the LPR, it's not quite as much. But a few years ago, whenever the police would send out their, their weekly report, the number of parking tickets that I saw written at three in the morning by the officers, you know, you've got nothing else to do at three in the morning, write parking tickets. Now with the, there's a different system, and they'd have to look at everything on the license plates. But I, I don't see how there being too much more juice to squeeze with that, with that revenue at this point. If we ever added.
I'll probably ask the same question on August 2nd.
Absolutely. I'll have a better answer for you.
Is there any value to the vehicle we currently have, trade-in, or?
Well, yeah, we'll end up surplusing it and probably getting something out of it. The sooner we sell it, the better value we get.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mike? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to purchase a replacement parking enforcement vehicle with total purchase and upfitting costs not to exceed the budget of $45,000.
Second.
All right, any further discussion or comments?
Good car. I had one for quite a while and very reliable.
Absolutely. Thank you for your work on it, and I totally agree. $1,500 to get it sooner rather than later is worth it. I almost cut you off. I was like, you don't need to pitch us.
I try to make your decisions as easy as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Excuse me, Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
And Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last item on our agenda is the First Amendment to the interim city manager agreement.
This is the agreement between you, the commission, and me. And it expires right now on July 28th. Given that the next city manager isn't, isn't planning on getting here until about August 1st, recommended that we extend this. I don't know how far you want to extend it or how long. The one thing of particular note in here, though, is the, is the pay. It went from mirroring Amy's contract when I signed up to now mirroring what we suspect to be Chuck's. And just going forward for however many weeks that goes. And then it's essentially, my recommendation would be to kind of leave this open-ended. And as soon as Chuck's done with me, I'm out. And that way, we don't have to set any more arbitrary dates or anything like that. As soon as he feels comfortable, then I will gratefully and graciously ride off into the sunset.
All right, do we have any questions or comments?
The only question I have, I think you said the new city manager starts August 1st?
That's what's being thrown around. It has not been decided that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so we have, we're still in negotiations. Myself and Jennifer are still working with him on tying up some loose ends. But he is still planning on, we're, we're still on target for him to start on August 1st. I know that with, we'll need to, we'll be voting on that on July 30th. So I posed to Doug last time we talked, and Jennifer and I both kind of pushed him. We're like, so we're going to be voting on this on the 30th. There's always the, you never know, situation. He's still good with starting two days later, or I don't know what the, is it? Yeah, so August 1st is a Thursday, and he, Doug said, yep, he's moving. He's already in Florida. He's in the panhandle right now with his family. So I don't know the specifics or logistics on if he'll be in temporary housing at that point here until he finds a home. But that's one of the things that we're, is kind of holding up is the, the housing situation and what he's, what he's looking for as far as a home here. So I think, if that, hopefully answers your question.
That's good news. Thank you.
So my only thing would be, does anybody, I asked Doug today, and I think he's in, he was in a day-long interview session with another client that he's working for. So we all remember how busy he was that day with us. He didn't get a chance to get back to me. But if I recall correctly, Chuck had requested a specific time period of overlap, I think, or was that a different candidate?
No, I think it was like a couple of weeks overlap, yeah.
Anyone remember?
Something of that sort. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, but it makes sense. At least, at a minimum of two weeks, I would think.
Yeah.
Maybe a year.
He just wanted to see your face.
You would be so gracious at work on that one.
So my only idea is we couldn't, we could set it at, I don't know, do we have to have a date certain in the agreement? Or could we set it at two weeks after the start of the new city manager's contract?
We can absolutely do that. And if you want, based on what Gary proposed, we could say, you know, as the, basically until the new city manager determines it's no longer needed, but no longer than two weeks following the appointment. So that way, it could actually end sooner if they're in agreement that there's no more shadowing needed after, you know, a couple of, a week.
Yeah.
I think we have a lot of projects, so I think we have a little cushion.
I'd say a minimum of two weeks, you know, it depends on, what do you recommend, Gary? Gary, what do you recommend?
Yeah, up to four weeks.
My experience is it depends on the individual.
Yeah.
I don't know what Chuck's style is. My transitions are normally in terms of a day or two. Because inherently.
Want to get to?
It just gets.
Still holding on to the reins and trying to figure out, you know, whose, whose decision it is, and they are all his. I mean, I'm going to, it's going to be an easy transition, but normally it's not a long.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and make the agreement up to four weeks? But, but if it's only two weeks, we can cut it off at that.
Or one week.
Maybe not.
Give us a flexibility.
I think two weeks is quantity sufficient, and if we need be, then we can always bring it back to us and discuss.
Two weeks is way too much.
Yeah. We've also had the, Gary's been gracious enough to serve quite a bit longer than we anticipated, so we appreciate that. And I didn't, wouldn't want to stretch it out any, keep you here any longer. I know you've got cooler weather to get to.
I think we should keep him. I think we should keep him.
I concur.
You want to be a bridge tender? All right, so with that, is that, do we need to reword this, or can we just incorporate that into the motion?
You can just incorporate it into the motion.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the interim city manager agreement, which extends the contract through no longer than August 14th.
Not, we're not going to do a date.
Let's say.
Two weeks after the first.
Two weeks after the appointment, yeah.
Two weeks after the appointment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Gary.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. All right, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.